For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are not going to have the student report, we're gonna change that to May because there was no school today. I do have, before we get, begin the meeting, I'd like to review the functions of a school board. Every school board member has taken an oath to attend school board meetings and to be informed, know that we are the governing body and we do not manage the district and/or micromanage, we rely on our administration and teachers and staff. We work respectfully with board members, administration, and SAU staff. We respect confidentiality, we work as a board and not individually. We understand the chain of commands per school board policies. The chain of command for handling complaints typically starts with the individual directly involved, teacher, staff member, coach. Then escalates through the principal to the superintendent, escalates to the principal, then to the superintendent, finally to the school board. We also establish policies, protocols, operations, and programs and oversee budgets and contracts. Our role is to be unbiased, non discriminatory, respectful to everyone, and do not intimidate or mistreat administration, employees, public, and/or fellow board members. And this also includes emails that are being sent. I would ask that every board member be able to speak once before another board member speaks twice for questions and concerns. So I'd like everybody to have a chance to speak one from, once from our board, and then if you have a follow-up, we can go from there. Staying focused and on track to the business of the agenda is key to moving forward in a positive direction. Negativity or bullying will not be tolerated. Public comment. Public comment is designed to open for thirty minutes and five minutes per person. Non-agenda comments about specific personnel or students may not be heard. Reminder that the public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide their input but is not a question and answer session. Defamatory statements, comments, threatening bodily harm, or other unprotected speech will not be tolerated by public or by board members. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Can I just, Michelle, if I could add a comment to that if you don't mind?
What?
I don't feel under the First Amendment right of anybody that if we have parents here that want to speak about their student that we can stop them. And I would like a legal opinion on that before you try to do that and then we get in trouble.
I read the policies, Maria, so I reviewed all the policies before I put this together.
But you're not.
So it's not something that I'm just making up.
No, but parents have a right to speak, that's what I'm saying about their student.
I didn't say they didn't have a right to speak. They have a right to speak to what is on the agenda.
No, you can't do that either, would you, right, Maria? I said no.
Um, the law allows comments on, it doesn't have to be on things that are on the agenda, they are things that fall under the purview of the board.
Yeah, I don't have us get in trouble for that.
I don't think we're gonna get in trouble. There have been plenty of things that, in the past, that we could've got in trouble on.
Well, the same to pass and back to.
Exactly, so let's move forward. Thank you.
I have another question.
So let's move on to public comment, we're gonna open it up at four thirty-five.
Good evening, Rebecca Sherban, I teach eighth grade language arts and I am the co-director for the school play, which is happening Thursday night. Doors open at six o'clock, curtains are open at six thirty. We will have a seat for any of the board members who would like to come specifically saved, also every single person here is invited. Thanks. It's called a murder at Regent House, it's pretty wonderful, so thanks.
Thank you.
Is there a fee?
I was just gonna say that. Oh, you know, it's funny that you mentioned that this play has been a little bit of a work in progress, so we're, um, we're playing with the idea that it may just be donation home, donations. That should be great, so, appreciate anybody who would come and give our kids the audience that they so rightfully deserve.
Aww.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can't wait.
Hi, Janet Dow, seventy-five, Fongs Lane. I'm here as a parent tonight, okay? I contacted the school roughly about two years ago. I've contacted the principals, I wrote to the school board, and I also wrote to the superintendent. I ended up with a meeting and because I came as a bus driver and as a parent on that meeting, I was released of my duty as a driver in Seabrook because, I guess I hurt someone's feelings, I'm not sure what that was. But tonight I'm here as a parent on the same issue. I kept quiet for two years because I was threatened by the administration not to contact my school board, okay? I contacted you last month in a non-public. Non-public because I was told not to contact you, and I feared for that, my job. Tonight, I don't fear for my job anymore. If you want to remove me as a bus driver, remove me, but I'm here as a parent, okay? This school has a bad bullying problem. My child is involved in it, it's been going on for years, and there's no conclusion to it whatsoever, okay? I am done with it. Right now, I have the basketball and I'm playing by my rules, not anybody else's rules. I have contacted the governor on this and I'm going as far as I can, if I have to contact WMUI, to make this stop so that my child can come to school safely. Because he don't want to come to school, he's scared to come to school. He's constantly, constantly being hit, being pushed, being kicked. It, I, I'm done with it, I am done with it. He goes to school without a mother because I was removed because I contacted the board, okay? He doesn't see me all day long. The nurse, Jordan, and I are seeing a pattern here where he goes because he's got a headache, because he wants to call mom. He don't get to see me. He leaves for school without mom. He comes home from school without mom because now I drive Winnicott and I can't be there for him. Then he goes to practice, we get home about eight-thirty at night. I don't have much time with my child now, okay? But to send him to school in fear every day and have to come without me there to let him know everything's gonna be okay. He don't, he don't understand. There's been times the schools called me, he don't want to come home. Because there's a gentleman in Maine that shot up in a bowling alley, that then shot up in another place, and the kids are talking and they're saying, this guy's in Kingston. The school called me, Kim, don't dare to go home. Well, I don't know what to tell you, you've removed me from Seabrook. I'm driving Winnicott, I can't be home. You're gonna have to put him on the bus and you're gonna have to send him home. That's not what a parent wants to do to their child. And I don't want to send him to school every day here knowing that he's probably gonna be pounded again, be pushed again, possibly injured. It, it's, it's just overwhelming to me now. And for two years I have battled this and I have shut up, I'm not shutting up anymore. I'm not going non-public anymore, I'm going public. And if I have to contact the news stations, whatever I have to do, I'm gonna do it until you guys get a handle on your school system.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Leah Brown, one eighteen, Cimarron Drive. I came here today to again talk about the bullying issue at the middle school. Unless needed, I won't go through all the details again about what my daughters are dealing with. Meredith, I know you say the board doesn't typically respond to public comment, but this should concern them as their policies aren't being followed. In the policy manual, section J, titled Pupil Safety in Violence Prevention, it gives the definition of bullying and cyberbullying. My daughter has missed forty days of school this year, some due to another issue that I won't get into today. Two weeks in February after this girl said she would be the one to humble my daughter, with research, humbling someone can mean the desire to belittle someone physically or mentally. It very much is a threat depending on the nature of content. Colleen decided to take other students' thoughts over a definition after having to ask. After having to ask for a formal investigation, I received an email Friday night stating that none of these events fall under the category of bullying or cyberbullying. I have been very humble and patient through all of this. Now I'm beyond angry and I want answers. My daughter just returned from being out since March tenth. The school environment before she left was hostile. She had significant emotional distress and her education has been disrupted. The same policy I named states it only takes one incident, this is four. What exactly do you feel bullying is? Colleen never called with these findings.
You can't state people's names.
I apologize.
Administration.
I apologize. I was never called with these findings, which in the policy it states a phone call is to be made along with the email. Also, the superintendent is responsible to ensure all policies are followed. I would like to know when the last annual staff training on bullying was held, as it states in the policy that is to happen. And what about the annual program for the kids to happen? In two thousand twenty-four, there were fifty-three acts of violence in this school. The superintendent is constantly promoting to better kids' mental health. Do you realize bullying has a huge impact on that? Do you also understand taking away suspension does not help? It tells kids they get away with things and they will use the mental health as a clutch to get away with these things that they do. You're creating a bigger issue in in this school for all the kids. And if you're here for the kids and not just a paycheck, things need to change. Policies need to be followed, kids need to be disciplined. Let me ask you this. Have you ever had your child come home terrified of school? Crying from being tormented so bad or had weeks of sleepless nights? Calming your child down because the next day is a school day? Or just to make sure that they don't self-harm again, all because the school simply isn't protecting your child? Because I have and it's awful. You need to do better, there's no other choice, these kids deserve better. I may not have found the right legal aid yet, but when I do, this school will be held accountable for everything they've allowed my daughter to be put through. I have the policy printed out and it is not being followed. In your handbooks, there's a very small portion on bullying. And this school is not following what it says. I have everything highlighted and this school is going against everything that it says in your handbook. Something needs to be changed. I have also gone to the governor, I have also gone to the Board of Education. I will get things changed, I will get answers. And like I said, this school will be held accountable.
Can I just say, Leah?
Thank you, Leah.
Just wanted to say to you that I appreciate you very much, as well as Janet, for coming up. And I hope there's no repercussions on anybody for speaking, that's what we're here for. And I also want to tell you, everything you've just said is what is making it so difficult in our classrooms to teach the kids. Because they need the support in the classrooms as well.
Absolutely.
So they can teach the kids that want to be there and learn. So it's a, it's a big thing happening here and we need to take care of it as a board.
Yep.
So, thank you.
I apologize again for using names, I didn't think that one through. I, I'm just, I'm angry and I.
I didn't know you'd come because I thought there's a process to follow and if we don't know that you've been to them, then we wouldn't know that you would come to us. So I, I appreciate knowing you're following the steps that Michelle just talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll definitely have to look, have a hard look into that.
Hi, Alyssa Dow, I teach sixth grade language arts. Um, I'm asking while public comment is open, if I'm able to make a statement in non-public? I don't want to miss my opportunity if I'm unable to speak in non-public as my statement will be made publicly. So is there a way that we can, I would like to make a non-public statement?
I think we can save it in public if, as long as you don't mention any specific names.
I'd be more comfortable in non-public, but I'm happy to do it publicly, I mean, it's the board's choice.
Go ahead, let us hear it.
Okay. So, uh, we wanted to address the following statement in non-public, but due to fears of setting a new precedent, for a non-tenured teacher, I must deliver a statement in public comment. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for taking the time to allow us to advocate for our colleague, teammate, and dear friend, the sixth grade social studies teacher. We are absolutely devastated to learn about our administrator's recommendation to not renew the contract. It is the administrator's duty to observe teachers and develop their own understanding of instructional practices based on their observations in the classroom. Sorry.
It's okay, Alyssa.
To unprofessionally elicit feedback from staff who are not in his classroom on a daily basis, sorry, nor have the role of an evaluator to not only put staff in an uncomfortable position, but also harm the culture and community of this building. These unprofessional conversations should hold no weight on a teacher's evaluation or be used to determine one's renewal. Every single administrator that we've had in this building for the past ten years has failed off staff. From failing to complete evaluations in a timely manner, if at all, to not supporting any authentic and meaningful professional development and discourse. Not once has the sixth grade social studies teacher ever received support to develop his curriculum. We have much, sorry. We have much needed a full-time curriculum coordinator, which I know is to no fault of our own, was unavailable this year. But she has been here for years and not once has sat down with the sixth grade social studies teacher to discuss curriculum. From our lens as a team, the sixth grade social studies teacher has always stepped up to support us, including planning and fundraising for a college school, creating cross-curricular opportunities with math through financial literacy, supporting language arts with implementing wit and wisdom during our RAN block, facilitating research skills with science to create projects on landforms and biomes, and working with library media to assist students with developing Google websites about Canadian provinces and territories. Our team is stronger because of our collaboration with the sixth grade social studies teacher. Students understand the importance of transferring skills between classes because of the sixth grade social studies teacher's willingness to work with our multiple disciplines. All teachers need to refine their practices, which is why we have professional development and observations. Being a kind, welcoming, authentic human being cannot be taught. Students love the sixth grade social studies teacher as an educator, coach, and genuine human being. We ask that you reject this non-renewal recommendation or allow the sixth grade social studies to, teacher to pursue the appeal process. On a final note, administrators come and go in this building. As a team, we mirror the same devotion, loyalty, and support that this community has for students as we do for our colleague and our friend, the sixth grade social studies teacher. I apologize, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alyssa, thank you for that, and I just want to say one thing to all of you who are up in the air. My first time up at this board table in March, I heard basically the same thing I just heard tonight. Good teachers going out that door, a year later, here we are again, and I am disgusted. That's what I want to say, disgusted. And I want you all to know out there, I never got that renomination list until today. So I didn't have time to look and, and see what was going on. And that, is that okay? Not really.
But obviously you didn't look till today.
No, it got put on today, Michelle, I even emailed.
Till today.
Michelle, I looked, it wasn't there.
Correct.
I just saw it.
All right, we're gonna move on.
No, you're not, I'm gonna tell you.
Go ahead, say your name.
Andrea McCusker.
See how rude.
I live at sixty-six Marshview Circle. I'm also a teacher at this school.
Andrea, excuse me, could you just say your name or your address again?
Sixty-six Marshview Circle.
Thank you.
I personally have an issue, Maria, with you stating that because you also are sending teachers out this door. The way you treat us, the way you create a hostile environment, to me, it's very hypocritical of you to blame these people when you do the same thing.
Thank you very much, but I'm not, I'm not sorry, I can tell you that. Andrea.
Andrea.
Any other pub, public comment? All right, we'll leave it open till five oh five and move on to approval of minutes. I would just like to change one thing. Denise, where are you?
Yep, here.
Um, some of the Michelle's are spelled with two L's and I only have one.
One L?
Yeah. That's the only change that I have, I don't know if anybody else has any changes. All right, I need a motion to accept the minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five with the corrections.
Motion.
Motion by Maria.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lacey, all those in favor?
Yes.
I.
Uh, unanimous?
Thank you.
All right, and now on to the SAU report superintendent, student services, and curriculum.
Can I start, Mary?
Sure, happy to, thank you very much. Wanted to give you some good news, talked to you recently about, um,
Welcome back, by the way, Mary.
Thank you so much, thank you for having me. Um, talked to you about the, um, local education authority determinations that come out once a year. We actually got them yesterday, so next month I'll be coming to you with a full report. But we recently received a letter, um, in all of our districts regarding indicators four A and four B. That's a data analysis regarding students with disabilities, um, comparing them to students without disabilities for suspensions, long-term suspensions over ten days. And our district here in Seabrook does not have a determination of significant discrepancy for either four A or four B, and no further action as required. So that was really good news to get that information and we wanted to share that with all of you. So not just sharing the difficult news, but also sharing the good news for those particular indicators. And then, as you know, we have the opportunity to partner with who we play for, a nonprofit that offered us electrocardiogram screenings to identify the potential risk of, um, youth athletes, grades five and up, who may be at risk for sudden cardiac arrest. Um, that is unfortunately a near fatal occurrence that impacts adolescents and young adults. And we conducted those screenings from February tenth through March tenth in all five of our districts. We didn't have, um, a very large response here in Seabrook, but we did have some. Um, statewide, um, they have completed, um, over three hundred screenings. In our SAU alone, in our five districts, during that time period of, of those five screening dates, we completed a hundred and seventy-six of those. So kudos to all of the hard work of the families, our nurses, everybody who contributed to get that done. Statewide, twelve students out of the three ninety-eight were identified as moderate risk and two of those students were found to be high-risk and referred for further intervention. So we can save one, one child, we've done a really good job. So we'll bring it back to you again next year, if they're willing to partner with us again to offer these really low-cost screenings, we'd like to do it again. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll, um, talk about Dr. Cass's curriculum report. Um, just to note, today was our SOUY professional development day. Um, this morning we had a speaker, but this afternoon folks worked in, um, had some choice over a variety of different sessions. Um, some folks were doing vertical team meetings on particular curriculum areas, so good energy. Um, she also noted some work that's ongoing in science and across grades three through five. And, um, the Science PLC that is meeting monthly, um, currently examining curriculum documents and looking at ways to vertically align middle school, science, and high school, physical science, and biology. Also, um, curriculum coordinators have reviewed the approved changes to social studies requirements with, um, respect to the Holocaust genocide instruction. Um, there's ongoing work related to virtue of a learner. And then shifting to my report, just a couple of things that I will highlight. The student leadership team will be meeting at Primex on April sixteenth, our insurance carrier. Um, they've offered a couple of different trainings to our students this year around, um, developing their leadership skills. So, um, just a great opportunity for them to interact with, um, some different adults and, um, get a sense of how their skills now translate to, um, workplace skills later in life.
We have some great programs up there.
We do. Um, on, um, crossover day in the legislature is April tenth, so that means any bills that have been approved in the House move to the Senate and vice versa. Um, so we will be holding a legislative session on April twenty-first, with SAU ninety and our, um, regional legislators are all invited to attend that. Just an opportunity to discuss, uh, those that are moving forward and potential impact public education. And then, um, I will note that the legislative or not state assessment will be coming up after April vacation. So we're approaching kind of the end of year there. Um, we talked at the joint board meeting the other night about, um, the impact of the closing of the Federal Department of Education. Um, at this time, there's no immediate anticipated impact, um, particularly with respect to our, um, title grants. So IDEA funding, um, well, not funding, IDEA itself will remain in place. Um, Title I will remain in place, they may be housed in different areas, they may be moved totally as block grants to the states. Um, what is less certain right now are, are some of the other area grants. So Title IIA, our teaching and professional development, um, grant funding, uh, Title III funding, we don't receive a lot of that, but that is funding to support students who are English language learners. Um, Title IV funding, which, um, kind of whole-child funding, um, that has supported a variety of things over the years from some, um, summer enrichment to some STEM programming to some social-emotional, um, um, curriculum. Uh, and then, we also don't really know what the funding will be for all of those, um, title grants. Usually we have those preliminary determinations in May, um, sometimes June. At this point, um, we don't have really any clarity about the timelines for the federal budget. So until the federal budget is decided, we won't know what our allocations are, so just giving folks a heads up on that. But maybe later, um, in the process than usual. That said, you'll hear from Dr. Cassley most likely next month, um, as we do our grant assurances and submit our, um, anticipated activities for the use of federal funds. We'll be able to, to share more information as we go.
Can you just explain to everybody, um, just in case people are watching, um, the vertical alignment? So obviously we know vertical, but what is the process is?
Sure.
Or how does it work?
Yeah, the intent is to bring teachers together across the grade levels, right? So kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, on up, um, so that you're able to look at what's being taught in the curriculum. A lot of our, um, state content science in particular is taught in grade spans, is, is shown in grade spans. So, you know, science in grades three through five is gonna cover these topics. So it's really important that teachers are meeting together regularly to talk about that, to make sure that all the strands are being covered and that we're not, um, repeating, right, a lot of the same instruction. And so that, that's the work of curriculum alignment across, across those vertical grade levels. And teachers come back together, they share practices, they talk about things that are working, they share data, in order, again, to improve instruction for students.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else have any other?
No.
No, if I have a question, if no one else does. On the, um, the eighty million, I think it is, they're looking at half the state budget for federal funding, is there any amount at all that we kind of have to worry about losing at this time? That we need a plan B just in case, are there any federal funds you're concerned about? Or no, they're all gonna come in and we're good, throwing down?
So, so again, I, I, um, we don't know where the funding will come in for sure because, um, that may be at the discretion of the state and, and Congress has yet to set their federal budget. Title I, um, most likely will remain relatively intact. Again, I can't speak to exactly what the funding levels will be as will IDEA. Title IIA, our teacher professional develop, our professional development funding, um, has much less certainty. Title III, our funding for students who are English language learners has less certainty. And Title IV, um, which is kind of whole-child funding, also has less certainty.
So we don't have like any idea of money-wise where it could have gone at this point?
We don't, not until Congress sets a budget. Um, you know, I've heard, uh, a variety of, of different projections, but I think it's, it's too early to really be able to know that. And as I said, I think we'll have those allocations later than, than we have now.
Alright, moving on. Any other questions? It is still open.
Mena?
Yes, great.
Thank you. Rebecca Sherwood.
Thanks for the reminder.
I'm sorry. Um, I forgot that we had a really important thank you to Chris's Comics, who just surprised us with a $1,000 donation.
Oh, nice.
For the eighth grade trip to DC. That's why. Yeah, it's the best community. Um, I'll transfer now to the teacher. I'm happy for the opportunity to greet the new board and feel especially gladened by the review of the school board function review. You have a collective group of professionals in this building who are faithfully dedicated to helping our students receive everything they need in order to be successful and productive members of society. I care about your kids, and I know that the majority of this town knows how much. It is my hope that parents involve themselves in what's happening in our school. And although the town decided not to approve our budget, please know that we are a resilient group. And we will do whatever is necessary to provide our students with what they need, even if it means having to create it ourselves. The ask is this, for parents and guardians of our most important students, who are every single student who passes through that door, to please reach out directly to teachers or school administrators if you have questions about what is happening in our classrooms or in our halls, because we promise you, those of us in the building who are doing the hard work and who are learning alongside your children every day are the best people to present your worries, your wonders, or your concerns with first. Thank you.
What a great way to end public comment.
Close it down. We've got a couple more minutes, I think.
Alright, moving on to...
We got someone else.
Oh. Just state your name and your address.
Uh, Sam Merrill, 13 Air Circle. I'm also the athletic director for the school. I would just like to invite the board to the start of our spring sports season. The 14th, girls softball will play away in Hampton Falls at 4:30. Baseball will play home at 4:30, and track is meeting at Winnicott at 4:30. We are all invited.
Thank you.
Come out and see.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good luck.
We have two more minutes left on co- um, public comment. If anybody would like to say anything before we move on to the report.
Can I just ask that, what I asked for, the annual reports, the, um...
Can you get up to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
Do I have to state my name again?
Yeah.
Leah Brown, 118 Cimarron Drive. When I asked for when the last annual...
Oh, like, ah, the training?
Yeah, training.
The bullying training?
Can I actually, can somebody actually tell me when that was?
Do you know when that was, Hannah?
Yeah, it's done, it's done every fall at the start of the year.
Okay, what about for the kids?
That's a, that's a question for administrators, but it's part of the handbook and, um, part of the school safety expectations. Um, we can certainly have the principal follow-up with you.
Okay, because I know I asked my kids and they said they don't remember ever having it in middle school.
I know we have something recently on vaping.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we had a bullying type thing. Have we, Colleen, that you know of, or Tim? I mean, you guys was known.
For elementary, Mr. Han does a lesson, our guidance counselor, in the beginning of the year. He goes to every class and delivers a lesson about bullying.
So our counselor or drawing advisory, they talk about it.
Yeah. Okay.
So, mostly in the fall.
Yeah, that's, that's what he'll typically do it, September, October.
You know, we love to ask questions like on what was stated about like certain things that... Like I just have questions about the suspension thing that she brought up, about the, I don't know what it was called.
Yeah, if that was probably going to report, you can ask, I mean...
Okay. Like the report you were talking about, the, about the suspensions with kids with disability and not disability. What is that whole thing?
Do you want me to answer questions to the public?
Yeah, would you like her to just follow up with her?
Yeah, I was just going to say, because it's, it's, uh, the board that you're directing the question, but we can follow up with her and get back to you.
And for the public, I paraphrase, there's more information in the board report than is in Board Docs, so folks can refer to that as well.
Okay. Alright, so it's 5:06, I'm going to close public comment. And move on to, where are we? Principal's report, SES.
So as you know, school safety is definitely a top priority for us, so I just wanted to quickly thank our teachers for, during the month of March, they were able to read the book, I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared, which is created by Alice, the same company that trains our teachers on active shooter training. Um, and so that was something that we had shared with parents that came up to our parent information night, that we were going to be doing that during the month of March. So, that's wrapped up and it went well, uh, so I feel great about that as something new that we brought to our school that we're going to hopefully continue to do and down the line start to involve students in some drills. So, I, I think we're much more prepared for that now and, um, good work. So thank you to our teachers for reading that. A week from today, we're excited to share that our preschool lottery will be taking place, so there's still a week to submit if you are interested. Um, and so, yeah, April 4th is when it closes, but on April 9th is when we will be drawing the lottery for preschool for next year. And then two weeks from today is our kindergarten information night, so we're excited getting that planned and ready for, to greet our incoming kindergarten students for next year. And then Title 1 Summer School, so we'll be running summer school again this year, like we've ran it the last few years, and it's going to be four weeks from July 8th to July 31st. Um, and this is separate from our special education ESY. Um, but this will be for any student that's interested. You can reach out to either your child's teacher or Lauren Constand for more information and registration packets. And then last thing that's not on the report, we're excited for next week for Playworks to kick off with our students. So they'll be here for four days to reboot our recess. Um, so we met with our coach today and we're all pretty much ready to go for that. So we're excited about that and fingers crossed for good weather next week.
Alright.
Alright.
Any other questions for him? Alright, move on to SMS, Principal's Monthly Report.
Okay, if you notice on the first page is a picture of our four of our teachers who presented at the New England School of Middle School. Mr. Ascanio, Ms. Sherborne, Mr. Miss Butcher, Mr. Felch. Um, it's a conference that the middle school teachers have attended over the years. It's nice when they can go back and kind of share all the good work that's happening during the rain block Mr. Felch and Miss Butcher did, and then Miss Ascanio and Ms. Sherborne shared, how you connect the curriculum to field trips and what that looks like and the purpose. Um, it's nice when we can celebrate the work that they do here outside of the building. Students had a presentation on the hazards of vaping. They asked great questions, pretty curious about it. Um, it was nice that that was set up by one of our staff members. We did each grade level separately, felt like it was a little bit more intimate that way, and she was very transparent in answering the concerns they have, um, and questions they have on that topic. So that was great. Uh, we also celebrated pie day, so, um, they had to recite pie. Mr. Felch, um, and the winners got the little, you know, table talk apple pie. So, even though it's math-related, they're also able to have a little treat at the end. And thanks to, um, the very hard work of our wonderful curriculum director, Lauren Constand. We started the luncheon with the scientists in grades seven and eight, started yesterday. Ten students yesterday, two scientists, they just kind of sit around and have pizza. They talk, they ask some questions like about their job, what do you do it, what do you go to school for? So that will continue for all of this weekend. Um, we're grateful for that collaboration between UNH and, you know, Spock interest in that YouTube could have a future career on that.
Any questions?
Colleen, um, quick question for you on the vaping, because we have gotten some emails home and stuff. You're, since that took place, you've actually had vapes confiscated in the school, is that true?
True.
It is true. So it helped raise awareness, you think, and go talking and things are getting cleaned up?
Things are always getting cleaned up. The kids bring vapes, and when we find out, we investigate and we confiscate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just as a side note, that was a YouTube initiative that we brought in, um, that presentation. So that was a student-driven...
Oh, you did?
Yep, that was a student-driven, um, activity from our YouTube group.
Okay, excellent. I did not know that. Thank you for doing that, to help clean up.
Alright, we're going to move on to the special services report. We kind of already went over the lottery.
Hey, does that, does anything else you wanted to add?
Sure. Hi.
How are you?
Um, so it was similar to last week.
I'm coming to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm, I still don't know everybody, so I'm still looking what people say.
Okay, uh, Christian Allison, the, uh, director of, uh, special services. So the report was similar to last month in that just reminding people that the lottery is open through Friday and the same date for Wednesday, the ninth, uh, for preschool, that will be dry. And then highlighting the PD that happened today, and since, um, it was just completed, I just want to say it was so fun. I, uh, got to work with all of the educational assistants and RBTs in the district and talked special ed for two hours, and, um, they had some really phenomenal questions, and, um, we just can't thank them enough. And if you don't know, tomorrow is, uh, paraprofessional day, so thank your EAs and your RBTs.
Thank you.
That's what I got.
Thank you, EAs and RBTs, for all your hard work. I know it's not easy. I have some friends that are EAs or RBTs and it's... In this world and time, it's just a thankless job, but thank you.
They're the backbone of special ed.
That's right, the, the frontline. Kind of what, y'all. Alright, moving on to the finance report.
Thank you, good evening. Um, so the year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports, um, have been uploaded on Board Docs, um, for your review. Currently, we have a total balance of approximately $100,000. Um, that's based on our expenditures and surplus revenue. Um, so we are tracking well, and we do expect to stay in budget through the, um, close of this fiscal year. Um, that being said, as always, um, I would make this caveat, please keep in mind that we, we do still have three months remaining in the fiscal year, so, um, that, that could change, um, if we do have any unanticipated expenditures, um, over the next three months. Um, additionally, I have included our, um, fiscal year '24, so last year's, um, annual financial report that is conducted by the, um, third-party auditor, Plazek and Sanderson. Um, I had previously reviewed the results, um, of that audit back in the fall. Um, however, this is the final published report. Uh, if you recall, um, we, we did not receive any findings of material weaknesses or deficiencies as a part of that audit. But it is, um, it, that, that final report is, is on the onboard docs. Further, I might have included, um, notification from the New Hampshire Department of Education, um, that, um, they, um, fiscal monitor our federal funds, um, because we are a subresidipent. It's, it's a pass-through, so federal funds go through the state to us. So that's, uh, when I say fiscal monitor, they, they audit us. And they did inform us that based on their, their review, um, they, um, they have not identified any issues or, or concerns relative to the district's management, um, of the expenditure and, um, of any of our federal, um, grant funds for FY '24. So when I say federal grant funds, that's IDEA, that's our title funds, um, those, those grants, so, thank you.
I know I, in my job that I work nine-to-five, we work with, uh, Plazek and, and they do a great job. They really, it's, to have no findings is phenomenal, I think, so, that's my opinion.
Plazek is a very, um, they, they, they go through every, uh, you know, they're very in-depth with their reviews, so... They spend a lot of time onsite going through all of our POs, our invoices, um, all of our policies. They interview all stakeholders, um, so they're, um, very thorough.
Yes, they are. Well, that's good news. Thank you.
Let me show, we've got some questions.
Oh, okay.
Do you, do you need a vote for us, because you said earlier you have that pretty large expenditure for out, out of district? Do we need to vote on that, or you go?
No, so I notified the board, um, of a special education, um, expenditure. Um, I just, um, that's a, that's a legal requirement for us to provide those services. But I do, anytime we have an expenditure that's unbudgeted over that $2,500 threshold, I just want to notify you so you're aware.
Yeah.
If it was, um, if it was an unbudgeted expense that we wanted to make that, um, that wasn't legally responsible, then I'd actually be bringing it to the board for your approval before we extended those funds.
How much was that total? I can't remember.
It was the, I asked because of the amount of intel.
Yeah, so there were, um, there was both the tuition cost, um, and the transportation cost, and I will pull that up.
Just a little bit, it doesn't...
About $24,000, that tuition.
Yeah, so, 20, $23,876 in tuition and $9,295 in transportation costs.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Alright, moving on to Maria, you had asked this continuing business default budget. I'm not sure what you had for questions.
Yeah, um, I just have, well, I do have a question, and I don't know if we have any other, um, things, so I guess this will go to Matt, too. When, um, you came to the board with the cuts, was there any other plan or any other areas that you noticed that we could cut and not affect teaching? Um, I know someone had mentioned there was three proposals. I only got one. So I don't know if you had another proposal or not?
No, that was our only proposal. Um, I mean, we looked at the entire budget. Um, so we, everything was on the table, um, and we, um, you know, we, we worked with Tim and Colleen. I know they had conversations with their teams, um, and so where we could potentially cut. Unfortunately, as you know, it was a lean budget to begin with. Um, so that was the proposal that we came forward with.
So there is no, um, there is no way anywhere for that. And also, so for the next year, and I guess as we go to the board, that you all agree that, um, we can do without any Spanish for the seventh-grade kids going to D for next year, because I think we need to look at it, too. And I don't want to say whether to cut or not cut, because that's not just me, it's the board, but I am very concerned that we have just said okay with cutting a teacher and although...
We're not cutting a teacher, the teacher retired.
Yeah.
And we're just not filling that position, but they were looking into, I think we'll probably discuss with the administration, we're looking into what we can do either after school or somehow to fit something in somewhere. Um, but as you can see, like even right now, what Matt just said, we, we have $100,000 left right now. And that's really miniscule to the amount that, you know, could, something could happen. You know, like last fall, we had the boiler.
It's my understanding that the board tasked us with forming committee to, um, to look at the long-term future of this, of the world language program, as well as come forward with some proposals for, um, some type of world language supplemental, um, after-school, um, option. Um, so that's something that we will, um, work on and bring forth.
Yeah, we're expecting to bring some information to the May meeting. There wasn't time, so it's your next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting.
Yeah, there's a few things on the May meeting, like the, um, retreat with the teachers and, uh, there's a bunch of other stuff that we discussed, so...
So you'll come back with that on, um, what we can offer?
Yeah, ours, our goal is, uh, to have something, as, as Meredith said, at the May meeting, um, and, um, yeah, we'll move over there.
Okay.
Alright, next, um, J S I C Coast Youth Services.
Over here. They're not here.
Why, I don't know.
Well, it's C Coast Youth Services. We can't answer questions for them. It's a whole.
You're the one who said to put on the board, but you never requested that they be here.
Well, maybe, I don't know if, uh, I don't think anybody can answer questions for them. But, um, my, so I guess I'll just lay out my blanket statement on that. I, um, reached out to Vic and asked him about the in-kind for the twenty-five thousand dollars cash that we were giving as a school district to partner with them.
I thought it was ten thousand.
It's twenty-five total.
In-kind is twenty-five.
So in-kind, right, so in-kind such as use of our front office staff or rent a living room or whatever it may be to come up with the money. But we gave them ten thousand cash that was not in the budget from last year. And we didn't give them anything for two years as far as ten thousand cash. And so I was just, I'm just surprised that we were so easy and able to hand ten thousand cash on a default budget to a nonprofit. So I reached out to find out, hey, is there any way that you might have had that extra money? How did you do it last year? They weren't asked to do it because they kind of knew that we weren't.
I thought they do it for the last ten years.
The counselor has been here for roughly thirteen years.
Yes.
Um, last year, those funds were paid for out of remaining funds in the grant. Um, they were paid for out of the remaining funds in the community schools grant fund, correct? And this was budgeted in this year, in the, sorry, community schools planning grant, correct?
The planning grant.
Um, and the, it was in the budget for this year.
And previous, previous to that, it was paid out of the Esra funds, um, and then part to, to that, it was operating budget.
This year was out of operating budget.
No, this year was out of, um, the grant, I remember.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that it was actually, so it wasn't out of the budget.
No.
That's correct. It's in the budget for the upcoming year.
Okay. Oh, well, that's a little bit better. Thank you.
All right, anybody else have questions on that? Um, and then M, I mean, S, M, I'm dyslexia, S, M, S, zone room.
Yes, I had asked for follow-up unfortunately, what we were all counting on, um, with the, um, Warren article fail. And you had plans to how you were gonna be able to help and supplement with behavior. So as a board member, I'm just asking if our administration can look and kinda see what Tim's doing up on his end and how we can better serve the middle school with something to help them with the behavior issue, which we just heard from multiple people is still existing. And if we can do something to have a room for those children that need that fifteen minutes or, and we've had it before. That's what I don't understand. We had this.
What, what room were you referring to?
It, well, you remember Linda Doyle, Linda Doyle, she had a room here for the kids. It was when kids went to school.
Yeah, and we. I look back and it, I think we talked about it in August, then we talked about it in October.
Yeah. Well, we were hoping.
October, it's November.
Yeah, so I, I was thinking that where the administration said that they didn't agree with just putting somebody in a classroom and letting them do whatever, so that, yeah, so I thought we ought to discuss it.
Yeah, you're wrong.
We don't.
So we did discuss it.
We asked for a behavioral specialist. The board is, did not vote for that.
Yeah. Down.
We're not gonna stick an EA in a room. First of all, we don't have a room. Um, so we were hoping that that would pass and we would have a thoughtful plan on what that would look like, what a space would be, how kids would be able to be there. We don't have that. So there's no intentioning right now, and I think we've had this conversation three or four times. I could be mistaken on the number of, you know, doing something similar to Tim is not feasible at the middle school.
So I'm just gonna give a little more info on this, cause I heard Lucy kinda say we've talked about it too, but.
So I'm.
Does it, yeah, well, we didn't talk about it since the article failed. So that's why I was bringing it up, because we were hoping there was a plan gonna be in place with that and it didn't happen. So to just go and not talk about it, I think as a board that we have a responsibility to ask if there is anything that we could do similar to Tim. If Tim's doing it in the elementary end with a zone room, under the, you have an RBT overseeing that, right, Tim?
It's a BCBA.
BCBA.
She's not currently, but she helped start it a few years ago, so it has a solid foundation because of what she was able to set in place.
She helped, right. Yeah. So just a little history with the middle school. We had, it was called a planning room. We had Linda Doyle for years. We had Randy Rogers for years.
Yeah.
We had a room and it wasn't a room where kids were just thrown into.
But it was labeled planning room, but it was in-school suspension.
Yeah, well, not just suspension. If a kid was struggling, they would go there and they would do their work. And they would get it done. And they would go back to class sometimes that day, fifteen minutes later, and it helped everybody. So I am telling you, I, we can call the people that used to do it to come in and help and tell us what they used to do, cause they're still around.
We're in a default budget.
Yeah.
And we can't even provide for Spanish because we're in a default budget. And we, the behavioral interventionist did not pass.
Yeah.
So I, you can't, if you don't have enough money, you can't do these things. I don't know, I mean, you can try to figure out in-house and I, I have faith that they are doing that and trying to do that. But if you're shorthanded and or, I, I don't know. I'm, I, I'm speechless. I know it's hard to believe, but I'm speechless.
Well. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I hear parents, I hear the staff and I hear the behavioral issues in the school.
Oh.
And it's not necessarily about more money. It might be about moving somebody here or there if they could. I think a thought process put into it is, what have we looked at? How have we looked at it? Will not happen. It cannot happen. And what would be the need for it in the middle school from the number I just heard? Cause honestly, I didn't know there was fifty.
Maybe we need to be in a perfect world.
No, it isn't perfect, but we have fifty-something, Michelle, we have fifty-something.
I know.
Fifty-three. Fifty-three.
Violent acts here. I did not know about them. I can tell you that. It never came to us. So I was shocked when she just said that. And what I'm saying is to sit here and say, yep, the budget got cut, too bad, so sad. Well, I wanna see that we work together. Maybe there is something we can come up with to help because not just, it's not just.
Well, maybe we can put it on that retreat.
Yeah.
And our board goals.
Yeah.
So that'll be a discussion, a meeting, not just a regular board meeting where you're blind, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we can all get our ducks in a row and investigate. Maybe we call other schools or, I mean, Meredith knows of some of the other schools.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if they have the problem that we have.
Yeah, and I think that's the thing. And it's not about, cause you might need some.
But I, I, yeah.
Coming up thousands of times. When you hear from our public like we do, we can't sit here and not ask. I mean, that's the simplest thing is ask, is there anything that we can do to support what he has in the elementary end? It's working. He'll tell you above and beyond, it's working.
Developmentally, elementary school and middle school is not the same.
Right.
Although I support and appreciate the collaboration, cause I think that's very important. It can't be apples to apples. The kids developmentally are not in the same place. I also don't understand why we would need a room to offer those supports. You don't need a space to do that. Those are student supports. If the students have a behavioral issue, they get supports. I've seen myself in this school, a child who is struggling and a staff member, get that child out of the space and do some intervention that works specifically for that child so that that child was not disrupting the other kids and that child was receiving the support that they need, so.
But a support doesn't always work. It, it doesn't, it doesn't always work like that. You have to.
All right, we don't have a public comment.
I don't care. You're just shutting people up.
Well, we can open it, right, Michelle?
You're just giving them answers that they just want.
What was that?
We can open it. You opened it in George Hashem to the last meeting, cause you want it, you want to open it.
I'm just responding to the zones room, which is what, what we've asked to be on the agenda.
Less, I think we've got to get through what we have on the agenda.
So I think that if you're looking at it, at what you're presenting, that that's not necessarily something that needs to get done to offer the support that you're talking about. And I've seen some of that support happening now anyways. I think that there's always room for improvement. There's always room for work. I think we should continue to evaluate what's being addressed, what's being done, how we can support students, how we can support staff. But in the audience, I've heard this brought up. I can't even tell you how many times. And I've heard administrators say, that doesn't work for this population in this space. This is what we're doing. This is what we'd like that will offer us more support. Unfortunately, that did not pass, but we can't control that. So all we can do is alternately, what else can we do to support you with the resources that are available right now? And as a board going into the next year after that, really push this community. People have a lot to say, but then half of the stuff that the school asked for didn't even pass. So if you want, change is made, then as a community, we're gonna need to give the support that people are asking for. And so right now, this is what we have. What else can we do with what we have to make this more functional or more supportive or more effective? But adding new things to it or things that have already been addressed and said this isn't effective, I, I don't see that as progress.
So I will say back to you as a board member, that because the budget didn't pass and because that, the person did not pass, we still have an obligation sitting here to, to hear the public saying, crying out, we've got problems.
I said that.
And to say, hm, we'll wait till next year or to say, hm, I wanna sit with the administration like Michelle said and we need to hash this out because it's come up a thousand times, not just three. And what can we do? Maybe they don't need the zone room in the elementary end anymore. Maybe it's needed more in the middle school end. I mean, I don't know, cause I haven't had a chance to sit and talk about that.
Yeah, well, that's why I think we wanted to meet with the teachers and the staff and, um, that.
Yeah. Yeah. To help.
I ha- had asked Meredith to reach out to the, correct, people to see when we could do that. And I think maybe that's, we, we should write down all our questions because we're not in the school. I, I wanna get in here, believe me. I wa- I wanna help volunteer if I can, but it's, it's hard because I work all night.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I think these are good questions that we should write down and start keeping a list of anything that could be brought up and asked and see what we can accomplish. Cause it, no, it's definitely something, we don't want kids not to feel safe coming to school and/or being bullied or whatever. Like I just wanna come in and just.
Fix it.
Yeah.
I know.
But it's not an overnight thing and it's not one person. It's all of us working together, parents working together, the community, the teachers, the staff, you know, everybody. And we gotta get the, you know, the kids, it's unacceptable to act this way. Do the teachers re- reach out to the parents and let them know how they're acting in class if they see it? I don't know. I don't, I don't have kids in the, the middle school. Um, but I would hope so, you know, it's, I think that's part of what, what, what you do.
That would be a great retreat topic or future topic. Administration has lots that it can share, um, including the data, um, that Colleen has included in her reports over the last couple of years. Um, you can see the trajectory, you can see the information.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it, it's, it's not perfect, um, and, um, it's not going to be perfect. That's the nature of, of adolescence. Um, and I think that the trends have been moving in a positive direction as we've looked at data, um, over the last couple of years. What we'd be happy to, you know, put it as on an agenda as a topic and dive into the conversation and let you know what resources and supports are in place. It's something administration spends a lot of time on.
So moving forward, Meredith, so we don't have any surprises. Instead of as a board member, me having those fifty-three violent incidents in Seabrook Middle School, can we like get a little report monthly about that so that we know?
Colleen's been including that data in her report every month.
That state, that state data even go on the state website.
Yeah, but I, just from you guys, we should hear for no surprises that, hey, you have ten.
Yeah, I, I've been hearing it and you've been harassing about it.
There was one, one incident that resulted in physical injury. There were forty-five incidents that included harassment and bullying without physical injury.
Thank you. Yeah, that's good. But I'd like, I just, we need, we need to know as we go along and I, I like the idea of a retreat. I definitely wanna hear from the staff because it's conflicting. You know, we can say they can't, they really are having a tough time in some of the grades and classes or no, they're not, so it's nice to hear from them. Um, it's also nice to hear from the parents.
Is it re- s- I would assume, but I'm not sure, um, is it reported to the state? Obviously, the physical part is, but all the bullying and.
Once a year in June, they collect that data.
Once a year, okay.
Yep.
Shouldn't they be provided once a year though?
For the state to collect the data? No, I mean, Colleen collects that data and she's been sharing that data, um, historically.
No. Uh-huh.
You know, I, the, the state, that's an annual data collection, um, unless there are concerns, um.
Is there a problem with just sticking them in the monthly report so that we know?
I think she said that she has been.
She has been.
She does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen it, but this month you did have the victim.
Didn't notice.
I don't know. It wasn't in this month, but we can look quite effectively, compile something.
I'm all right, I'm happy to send it to you.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
That sounds good. All right, um. New business, NHSBA training. So I did speak to Will today at the NHSBA. Did we come up with a date or are you still working on it?
So they want dates from you. They'd like to have several because they are scheduled in multiple districts. So I attempted, we've given them the main meeting date as that's the date that you had on the calendar, but they'd like to have a few others because they're not a hundred percent certain they can make that. So they're looking for a few dates from you.
Do you want us to give you that now or?
That's up to you, like, cause.
What is the board?
Setting dates, we can do that by email as well.
Do you wanna do it, everybody look at their schedules and email? Do we wanna concentrate on a certain, um, day? Like, is any day better than the other? Like Tuesdays is a normal school board meeting?
Did you, did you have training Monday night? Cause we had it last time.
We did have, um, the director come, the executive director.
At the joint board meeting?
Yeah, the joint board meeting.
The new, the new members, is that what it was?
Uh, it wasn't necessarily for new members. He just briefed over a bunch of stuff, um.
We had it last time, I remember having it, last year.
Michelle, would it be easier if we all knew the dates we can't do?
Sure.
And then whatever's left over.
And the trainers optional.
Be the one.
I can have Rhonda send it, you know, to all of you looking for available dates. Um, I would say at this point in the month of May. Um, and then I can share dates that you have in common with, um, School Board Association.
Yeah, cause I don't know what, you know, things that are going on with the school or who knows, when to cut it or anything like that, so.
So the next month of this.
All right, well, we'll try to look at it. Um, yeah, I know that the training is optional, but I feel like it's a good refresher for everybody to, especially new school, new school board members and for us to compile questions again for them, how, like, I may be new to being the chair. I was the chair years and years ago, but still things change cause this is a different time and a different period and RSA's changed. So I'm doing the best that I can to learn to run the, um, meeting effectively.
They're very good too, anytime for any board members.
Yeah, to reach out there. I, I mean, you can reach out, email. They were very helpful over the past year. Help them today. And there's also a, um, new school board webinar
Yeah.
that you can sign up for Tuesday for eight. I signed up for it. I will be on vacation, but I plan to either catch it or have it emailed to me so I can look at it at a different time. Um, it's five PM, I believe to seven PM, but if you sign up now, it is a free webinar because we pay into the New Hampshire School Boards Association, if anybody is interested. Uh, policy, we'd like to make a correction to KF dash R and change day, time and date of requested use to just time. And this is the community use of school facilities form. I guess that was confusing, so they just wanna take out the day, the word day.
This is just a first read, so we'll bring it back.
All right, motion by, oh, we don't need a motion? Okay.
It'll, uh, no, no.
First read, just second reads or final reads, okay.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Perfect. Anybody have questions on that? I'm sure if no, okay. So um legal counsel, I had put this on the agenda because um I know previous uh there was a legal counsel hired, um but they, I feel like they didn't necessarily, um what am I trying to say? They didn't um focus or have their focus on
Specialized. Specialized.
Yeah, well, no, on um the school and school law. Um so I didn't know what the board wanted to do, if we wanna stay with the counsel that was hired recently or if we wanna see if um the counsel that we had previous, Casasa, will would be willing to take us back and work with us on any legal issues.
It's definitely something that I'll, I'll have to think about.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
And just so you know, there's two, there was two legos, there's the, is it Apton and Hatfield? The Cots, I can't think of her name, and the uh Maureen Hyman.
I thought we only used.
We haven't used, but that that one in particular with issue with
Apton was specialized, I believe.
With Title Nine, that situation. Um but um yeah, and then no, Aptonism, there's another one, Dr. Drummelson is the special.
Trinum is on there. Ah, okay.
But um yeah, this is, and I think just to not harm anybody's, you know, reputation that we probably should have that conversation in non-public, if I think about it, maybe for the next meeting.
Yeah, it's definitely something I'd have to think about, I I don't wanna make a decision right off the the red.
Um. Yeah.
Yep, I just wanted to put it out there and just see what every, what the board's thoughts were on.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we can definitely bring it back um for May
May.
to discuss possibly in non-public. And or people can do their research and go from there. Alright, any other questions on that? Alright, hiring process for professional positions.
Yeah, so currently have a preschool opening that we're looking to fill, we may or may not have other openings, but um there there was some confusion last year and the process evolved multiple times. So I think we're trying to have some understanding of what the board's expectations are for the hiring process. Um prior to last year, it had been that the building principal establishes a committee um that typically includes a school board member, parents, members of the faculty um to um vet uh vet candidates, review applications, interview. Um that committee then um recommends finalists or finalists to me um for review and then I bring it on, and then historically I brought a nomination to the board. Um again, that that changed last year, so we're just trying to get some clarification about what the board's expectations are as we enter into hiring season.
I think that is, personally, I think that's the most streamlined. Um last year was super tedious, uh when we would go, when it was switched, um like I would read, I sat down and read seventeen applications from cover to cover and it was just super tedious to get a, to get a nomination, it's not like you were personally choosing someone. So I think it's best to have one person to be a part of the committee like it was before and we can all switch too, so that it's not just one person all the time. Um I think that's probably the the fairest and easiest way to go about it and the the most effective.
That's what we, that's what our policy is, right? Is that up to two board members can make options.
Right, but we, remember we switched it?
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, we switched it 'cause we held private interviews, no, we
Took one. Ah, we did, yes, okay, I gotcha.
Yeah, and then, then we decided and then because it wasn't effective that we were gonna go back to the normal.
Yeah. Communities, yeah, that was a lot, we did it for a while.
Yeah.
Um yeah.
So um Meredith, do you wanna motion on that for clarification?
If if what I described sounds okay to the board, I'm comfortable without a motion, I just wanna make sure it's clear.
To go back to.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I'm sure it'll be captured in the minutes and if people are comfortable with that, then okay.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, and then just some questions, so.
And then we'll let, let me know or let the full board know when there's a hiring committee being formed so and timelines for that, so you can decide who's available.
Okay, on those days, I'll be gone.
We also have, just to let the board members know that um in May, I have also added to the agenda the first grade that we wanted to discuss about um reducing the amount of teachers for first grade.
Question.
That was brought to our attention by some of um parents and so on.
Oh, or to to.
So I put it on for the May agenda to discuss to, and I asked for outline of like this classroom has this many, this classroom has that many. Obviously, it could change 'cause the kids going in and out, but just to see what it actually look like.
Did you make this request by email for this information? Or did you just call and ask for it? Do, I'm only asking.
No, I met with, when I met with Meredith, I asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we have an agenda.
But we set the agenda for April.
Yeah. 'Cause I think it's good for us to all know, like, and I'm just gonna bring this out there, so as chair last year and Lacy and Jen and Ken.
Well, it was, yeah, it was an update because we talked about it last meeting.
Shit, one's got it.
Right, what we tried to really, what we tried to do and stay on was that every board member knew kind of going into, what does it look like, what's the agenda gonna look like, what do you wanna put on? Do you have a question for Meredith that maybe Michelle didn't have in that piece? So we were very good about making sure we communicated, like the agenda was never final until we heard from all of you that you were all set and had nothing. And then, you know, you accept the agenda.
Right, I'm hoping to, anybody to email me on any agenda items that that some, any board member would wanna put on.
I didn't.
Administration. Yeah. Okay. And I'm glad that's on for next month, but she just mentioned preschool. Um this has been an ongoing problem um for staff um for a while. With the preschool opening, you still have an opening for preschool, we haven't filled it yet, right?
Well, we didn't fill it this year, we're looking, we've, we had moved someone into place to finish this year, we have an opening for the upcoming.
Did we took someone from first grade and moved them into preschool or was it kindergarten?
Kindergarten.
Okay, and we moved them and that was kinda like hoping that it would be a temporary um thing and then I know we have people out, so there's still positions that are not filled with um intervention. Um so I guess my thing is, is that I'm really concerned 'cause we did hear from teachers in particular numerous times about the concerns that they were shifted, the way they were shifted and have to serve and they've done it and I'm sure they did their best. But looking forward, I think it's important that as a board, we see why we can't fill that position, that preschool position. And I know you had asked about somebody else joining for preschool, I don't know if it was to fill that position, I'm a little confused.
They just said that they are filling that position for twenty twenty-five.
We'll talk about that.
I'm confused.
That was, that was.
You have the position of that, Meredith, do you have the position filled for preschool for twenty?
I don't think we've had anything about preschool beyond.
No. No, that's why I just said we're gonna try to have a hiring committee.
Twenty-one, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so we can talk about that a little more. In the first grade, have we have decided definitely that we're gonna switch that out or we're gonna look at it next meeting?
Michelle just said that we were gonna look at it at the next meeting, she asked for it to be added to the next meeting agenda.
But I'm asking you, okay. I just wanna know it hasn't happened yet, 'cause that was a big to-do. So, okay.
Um you lost me on that one. Alright, um personnel? Is that, no, or are we gonna?
Yeah, if you don't.
I'll go through the future meetings first. Um SAU twenty-one communications committee meeting, Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Lacy, you are on that committee and Casey, you are the alternate. And then the SAU twenty-one operations committee uh meeting Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-five. And Jen, you are the committee member and Casey, you are the alternate. And then our next Seabrook School Board meeting is Tuesday, May thirteenth. Um and we had discussed some of this stuff on the agenda. If you want me to send the agenda ahead of time, I can. Um or I can just email the board and say, and this is what I recommend putting on and if anybody has any other um suggestions or additions, we can do that.
Good.
And then, is that it? And then we're going into non-public? Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for a rule call to enter non-public session under RSA ninety-one, um A three two, is it?
E and B and C.
B and C, uh five fifty-one. Yeah. One second.
Second.
What's mine?
Go ahead. Lacy, you the motion, Maria, you second?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And Jen?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Casey?
Yes.
Okay, you are now in non-public.
All right, we need a motion, come back. Um, in non-public session and resume the public meeting.
Uh, motion.
At seven twenty six P M?
Yes.
Lacy, and a second?
Second by Casey. Lacy, Casey.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Maria?
Yep, aye.
Manamis, okay, you're back on.
Now it's up to you.
Yeah, I forgot, sorry, fall asleep over here. All right, uh, resume public meeting, personnel, P B?
No.
No? What do I, just personnel? Do we do anything?
There's no action on that item.
Oh, okay, so, renominations?
We need a motion to accept a resignation, correct?
Yes, but you can do renomination.
I can do a motion to...
I'm gonna die, so I don't know what we're doing.
Oh, I got it. Motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation of renomination for Seabrook School just district, excuse me, for the twenty five twenty six school year.
Hold on one second, are we... flopping to...
We're on C.
Two years?
No, that's different.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
That's different, yeah.
Okay.
A second?
I'll second.
Casey?
Lacy and Casey?
Jeez, I never thought of that.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Oh, you will forget it now.
So this is to accept the nominations as in...
Superintendent recommendation.
For S E S and S M S.
Yes, and I am, I am gonna, um, vote, um, present on that, and I'm doing it because I do not necessarily agree with the list that was given to me.
I have yes, no, abstain, or not present vote.
Right, present.
Just, yeah.
Just add it.
Yeah.
So, and then I'm just gonna switch some stuff, um, motion, oh, are you ready Denise?
I sure am.
Okay, motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for a two-year contract renewal for Timothy Dow, assistant principal, oh, principal, as presented, beginning July...
Just demoted.
Well, it's definitely a little typo, I'm sorry. It's a typo, um, beginning July first twenty twenty five.
And a second?
Second.
Yes.
Second by Jen? Get on, run.
All in favor? Aye.
Oh, I'm in favor.
Aye, aye.
Manamis, thank you. I probably just do them all on one, like, you know?
I know.
Oh, you're doing great, Lacy, keep going.
Oh, on the round, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, do one on.
All right, uh, motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for a two-year contract renewal for Lauren DeConstant, curriculum coordinator, as presented, beginning July first twenty twenty five.
Second.
Second by Maria? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for a two-year contract renewal for Christian Allison, uh, director of special services, as presented, beginning July first twenty twenty five.
Second.
Second by Jen, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Maria?
No. Okay.
Okay.
No, Maria.
Motion to, oh, let me know, okay, motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for a two-year contract renewal for Joshua...
Appicati.
Thank you, S M S assistant principal, as presented, beginning July first twenty twenty five.
Second.
Second by Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for a two-year contract renewal for Colleen West, S E S assistant principal, as presented, beginning July first twenty twenty five.
Second.
Second by...
Most she doesn't want.
Second by Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No, by Maria. Okay, and I think that's it, right?
And resignation?
Oh, um, I'll make a motion to accept, um, sorry, don't put his name in front of me.
Oh.
Albert.
Albert Bertrand, Albert Bertrand, um, his resignation.
With regret. Could we add that?
Do we have a second, Maria?
Yeah, with regret.
Okay, with regret. Second by Maria, all those in favor? Aye.
One second.
Yep.
All right. Who made the motion? I did.
Lacy.
Lacy, thank you, and Maria second.
Yep.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Okay, is that it? Jen?
Your turn.
Jen.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lacy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.